Let her rip it.
That's just me and him, man.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Thursday, July 20th, 2017 Board of Supervisors Meeting. Please stand for the pledge. Mr. Crowley will lead us in the pledge.
The pledge will be that we are citizens of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And can we please have a moment of silence for those serving our country, both at home and abroad? Thank you. Before I roll into announcements, I have a few announcements that Mr. Schuster would like to cover before I go to Board Members' announcements, if that's okay with everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, we're having some audiovisual difficulties tonight. My understanding is Verizon is having some issues, not just with our site, but with multiple sites. Therefore, this broadcast is not going out on Verizon. Things should be okay on Comcast, and of course, this will be available for rebroadcast, and will be up on YouTube at a later date. Also, we, as discussed at the last meeting, the August 17th meeting will be held at Ann's Choice. We'll be posting information on the township website for citizens to go ahead and attend that meeting, and how they can get into the site, and what room will be there. So look for that on the township website. It will not be televised live, but will be rebroadcast. Also, due to a conflict with Rosha Shana, the September 21st meeting will be canceled, and the September 7th meeting will be held. So that would be the first Thursday in September, we will have a meeting. The third Thursday, we will not. That is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so if anyone has anything bad to say about Verizon, now's the time. I'm gonna start off with announcements from Board Members, Ms. Frescatour.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow Board Members. My husband's gonna be very disappointed, loves to watch these meetings. July is National Park and Recreation Month. Find a park in your area using the Good for You, Good for All website, and spend an afternoon enjoying nature and parks in your own backyard. Put down your devices, grab your friends, your family, take a hike, bike, or walk. Bucks County is full of state, county, and local parks for you to enjoy. We've got one in our own backyard, Warminster Park. Come and enjoy it. Check out the local nature centers, Peace Valley, Churchville, Silver Lake. Get your play on by joining the NRPA Challenge Photo Contest. Win prizes for submitting your photos of playing in the parks. Each week has a different theme through July. Parks and Rec has a variety of discount tickets available. Discount amusement park and area attraction tickets are available for sale in the office. The price list is posted online. Discount premiere movie tickets to Regal, Edwards, United Artists, $9.50 each, which is quite a bargain. All tickets are sold Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. For more information and prices, check the website, wwwwarminister township.org. Summer environmental camps. Bring more children into a park during the summer months. Park and Recreation has partnered with Geo Ventures Incorporated to host fun environmental camps that appeal to all ages. Camps will be held outdoors at Warminster Community Park. Nature Explorers for ages five to eight. Dates Monday through Thursday, August 7th through 10th, time 9:00 a.m. to noon. Fees $115 for a resident, $120 for non-residents. It's a jungle out there, and nature explorers are heading out on adventure. Wilderness Survivor Camp, ages nine to 13, date August 7th through 10th, time 1:00 to 4:00. Same fees. Have what it takes to be an outdoor survivor. This camp introduces the world of wilderness survival using ancient skills and modern tools. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frescatour. Mr. Monroe.
None this evening.
Hey, thank you. Mr. McPhillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recently, the U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration released a report for 2016 that outlined the people who had died from either a prescription medication overdose or a heroin overdose. And last year, in the state of Pennsylvania, nearly 5,000 people died from an overdose. That number in Bucks County is 168 people. Unfortunately, that number includes people right here in our community. This is a topic that we have been talking about for a while now, and because it affects our community, we're gonna continue to talk about it. One of the things that we've learned is that the majority of people who die from heroin overdoses, they start off by abusing prescription painkillers. So one of the things that you can do is you can utilize the Township's prescription drop-off program by emptying out your medicine cabinets of any unwanted, unused prescription medications. I see that the district attorney has walked in, and he's gonna talk about the Bucks County's drop-off program. But here in Warminster, we have a really good take-back program. In the last couple of months, we've taken back nearly 200 pounds of prescription medications. And I can't credit enough Chief Donnelly in the Warminster Police Department, because without our police department, we wouldn't have a program. So please, tell your family, tell your friends to get rid of any unwanted, unused prescription medications at the police department. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Crowley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, let's review the new businesses in town. And first of all, I just want to thank everyone on the administration, started putting what each business does next to it, so it'll help.
Helpful.
It is very helpful.
That was me.
Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman. I appreciate it. Really quickly, let's run through the new businesses in town. Yamba Group LLC, which is, they provide a warehouse for wholesale items, moved in at 435 Iberland Road. The Osko Group, which is auto repairs, is at 817 Nina Way. CFAC USA, which is lifts for heavy trucks, located at 381 Nina Way. Air Mid Wellness and Counseling Center went into business at 1260 Old York Road. Cars Index, which is an auto repair and sales joint, is at 345 York Road. Atlantic Building Products, which is retail and storage, is at 56 Ash Circle. Groshard Furniture, which is furniture, is at 41 Bonner Drive. Eminem International Incorporated, which is in the warehouse business, is at 1099 Murns Road. And the Bancorp, which is commercial fleet leasing, is at 626 Jacksonville Road, Suite Number 205. As always, we thank all these businesses for choosing to call Warminster home, and wish them all the best. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crowley. I have a couple of announcements. I want to welcome Mike Peters tonight, who's sitting in for Mr. Savona, who's on vacation.
Thank you.
Welcome to the panel, Mike.
Thank you.
And I know he's not here tonight, but I want to congratulate Mr. Savona for being appointed to the Chairman of the Board of the Bucks County Habitat for Humanity.
Absolutely.
Board, which Judy Goldstein's in the audience tonight, she's a member of as well. So pass that along to Mike.
I will relay that.
Congratulate him. That's a nice program. I have a couple other announcements. I regret to send my condolences out to the Visco family. Dom Visco passed recently. He was a long-term member of our golf committee, and just a heck of a nice guy. You know, when I was sick with cancer, he would email me consistently to see how I was feeling. Anytime I've ever run into him, the man has always had a smile on his face, so he'll be sorely missed over at Five Ponds and in the community. He was a heck of a nice guy, so my condolences go out to him and to his family. And I also want to make mention of the traveling Vietnam Wall that was in Bucks County last weekend at the Pendel Park. I had the privilege of escorting my friend Joe Lero, who was a Vietnam vet, over to the wall, to the ceremony on Friday morning, which was really well done, and it was put together by former Congressman Mike Fitzpatrick, who did a heck of a great job with it. Also, my friends from the Carpenters Union, 1462, Mike and Kevin Morrow personally went out there with some volunteers and assembled everything and disassembled everything the end of the weekend. And they were the same fellows that came out and helped us with Safety Town. These guys go out and do free work. Like, you know, my union buddies get a bad rap, but when you need a free job, they're the first ones you call. And, but, I want to give a shout-out to those guys. They did a heck of a nice job, and that was really, really well done over at the park. So that's all I have for announcements. So I'm gonna move on to presentations, and the first one up is the Prescription Drug Take-Back Program with our area district attorney, Matt Wontrop. Matt, welcome back to Warminster. It's good to have you here.
Thanks, Chairman. It always feels like a homecoming when I'm here in Warminster. I'm a Tannock grad, class of '86, Panther Pride. My wife went to Wood, just to keep things even here, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the Prescription Drug Take-Back Program, because Warminster was one of our early adopters. Warminster was one of the first municipalities to get on board, and say, I think it might have been Dan McPhillips, who said, "Hey, we want a box. How can we participate?" And Warminster jumped right on. And the prescription boxes, the take-back box is right outside at the police station. It's right in their lobby there. And as long as there's police out there, as long as you can walk into that lobby, you can drop your prescription drugs off in that box. And I have to say, people stop me all over the place, and they wonder, you know, how are we ever gonna get out of this mess, this drug mess that we're in? And what can I do as a citizen? And there are some things you can do, and the easiest thing that anybody can do is to go through your medicine cabinets, go through your kitchen cabinets, off of your counters, and grab those old, expired, unused medications, bring them right down here to Warminster PD, and drop them in the box. For us getting to be old timers, it's just like you used to mail a letter at the post office, clang it right, you don't know what I'm talking about, but you clang it right into the mailbox, and in this instance, it goes into this green box, and we collect those old, expired, unused medications regularly. And I have to say that Bucks Countyans are getting the message. As you know, we do semi-annual Drug Take-Back Day, and that's national. And we do a great job collecting tonnage and poundage on that day, but we have seen a phenomenon very recently where, because we are getting so good at not waiting for those semi-annual days, so those medications don't sit in our medicine cabinets for a friend, or a neighbor, or a relative who suffers from addiction to be attracted to that and to steal those medications, we now collect more day-to-day than we do on those semi-annual days. And I am very, very proud to say, because I'm a little competitive, that Bucks County is number one in the state. We have collected over 90,000, that's not a misprint, 90,000 pounds of medication. We have far outstripped any of the other counties, including Philadelphia, including Allegheny, which has Pittsburgh in it. And I don't, that is a title that I never plan to relinquish. So please, keep up the great work, Buck County, and we're doing our parts. Every one of us is. And could I digress, Chairman, for another second?
Absolutely. The world's yours.
Okay, great. Thank you. Another couple of things that we're doing, and I realize that it takes, it takes each and every one of us to try to fight this fight, because law enforcement can't do it alone. And along those lines, we've established a new program. Representative Galloway down in Falls and I, nonpartisan, has nothing to do with politics, have established what's called the Push-Out-the-Pusher Program. This is something that was started in Cambria County, and was pretty effective. And I have, it's a tip line essentially, but it's more than that. You can, yes, you can get paid money if your tip results in us arresting and convicting a drug dealer. That's the whole point of it. But even better than that, what we have noticed, the phenomenon that we've noticed, is the strength is in the signs. Because you see the signs on your neighbor's lawn, and you know that people are not gonna take it anymore. And I brought a sign, I'm hoping, I'm not real tech savvy, but am I getting on the TV?
Yeah, you're good.
All right, great. So the back of it is a cheat sheet for me, which is wonderful. It's 215-345-3784. It's 215-345-drug. And if you call that tip line, you can even leave an anonymous tip, if you don't want to be known as the person that told on a drug dealer, so to speak. There's no shame in that, frankly. And if your tip is utilized and results in a conviction, you can get paid for it. I find most people don't even want the money. They just want to have a safe community. And one last thing along those lines, because people want to know, well, that's what we as neighbors and citizens can do. What are you, the DA, doing? Well, I'm happy to say that I went to the county, and I said, "You know what? Talk is cheap. We're done talking. I need your help. I want to start," not a task force, because task forces are for talking, "I want to start a strike force, a drug strike force." And the county voted my way. In the middle of the year, they allocated me the resources to hire six brand-new detectives that are dedicated solely to eradicating this poison from our lives, and the lives of our children, and the lives of our neighbors and our loved ones. And when I say eradicating, these people are already working. They were sworn in on July 17th, just this past Monday, and they're already working cases. Not to get the guy that's sharing the drugs, although we don't want that either, not to get the guy on the corner, although we don't want him to be doing that either, but to take down entire organizations. We want to stake our claim and put the bad guys on notice right now, that if you deal drugs in Bucks County, you're gonna get caught, and you're gonna pay the price. So I appreciate you letting me make that public service announcement.
Well, we'd like to get that on the character generator, the Push-the-Pusher, if we have some, something we can put together to put on our television loop.
That would be, that's a great idea, Chairman.
Our website, too.
Yep, absolutely. We can do that.
I can, if somebody would do me the favor of emailing me, I have it at a pretty high resolution, that I can then forward to you, that you can put it up on your website.
And do you have signs available for?
I have about 10 in my car. I can go get them and leave them here if you like.
Yeah, if you would, that would be great, sure.
Yes, it'd be great.
Okay, absolutely. As soon as I leave the podium here, I'll go back out to my car, and I'll grab them. Should I just leave them in the back of the room, or where would you like?
Yeah, Larry's gonna grab them.
Okay, I'd be happy to do that.
Before you go, though, I want to congratulate you on a very, very professional job that you did recently in Bucks County on that major case. Very professional and very well done. I know it wasn't easy, and I'm sure you went a few weeks without sleep, I'm sure, so very professional job.
I appreciate that. I have to say, it was not something that I relished being a part of, but I was glad that I could play a part, and I was really only the tip of the spear. It was all the men and women behind me that you didn't see every day, that were doing the real work, and bringing those four boys home, and bringing those two guys to justice. We have a long way to go, but I appreciate that, and everybody's good wishes and everybody's prayers is what kept us going. So thank you.
Thank you.
Been a lot of prayers in the community, District Attorney. I want to commend you also, because, you know, your diligence with your whole team in bringing those boys home to their families, and that was the most important thing, and bringing those men to justice. And I also wanted to just ask you one quick question. Some folks have asked me about, you know, returning their pills. I just cleaned out my medicine cabinets, but some people are concerned, do they have to take the labels off, because it has their personal information on the bottles?
That's a great question. The answer is no, because we incinerate the bottles and all.
Okay.
So they do pass through law enforcement hands.
Right.
But they don't ever touch non-law enforcement hands, and they go right into the incinerator and get burnt.
Okay. Thank you.
Great question.
Thank you.
We'd appreciate if you'd stop back from time to time and update us on the strike force. We'd be glad to hear some more.
That would be my pleasure. I appreciate that, Chairman.
That would be great. Awesome.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, the next up on our tonight's agenda is the auditor's presentation from Dunlap and Associates, and I'm gonna ask John Macarelli to come up and set things up for us. John is our finance director.
Good evening. We had our 2016 fiscal year financial audit completed, on a timely basis, I may add. And we have, it's an annual event, we're required by state law to have an audit, but it's generally a good business practice to have an independent outside auditor take a look at your financials. We have, our audit was done by Dunlap Associates. This is like the fifth year that was done, and tonight, I want to introduce Julie Davis from Dunlap to give a highlight presentation of the audit, and be around to answer any questions from Board Members or anybody in the audience.
Right.
Thank you. Thanks for having me here tonight. Do you have copies of it in front of you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's pretty thick. Don't be worried, I'm not going to go through it page by page. I'm gonna give you a real brief overview.
Thank you.
So, the most important thing is if you turn to page one, you will see.
I don't think we do have it in front of us. I think it was sent out previously.
Don't have it?
It was previously distributed.
Okay.
I thought I saw it.
Okay, no problem, I have that presentation, too. The first few pages in the report are the auditor's opinion. That's the most important thing in the report, obviously, and I am pleased to report it is a clean opinion. There are two sets of statements in the report. The first set of statements is, we call them the governmental financial statements, and those statements report your activities on a governmental, it collapses all your funds into a governmental column, and then your business column, business type column, which is your golf course. But this is an interesting presentation to see, because I think you're probably more used to seeing your information on a fund basis. These statements report them on a full accrual basis, which means you see them with your long-term assets and your long-term liabilities included in the numbers, whereas your fund statements don't include your debt and your capital assets and things like that. So that's always an interesting thing to look at, and you can see it on a whole organization basis, kind of all collapsed into one. Then the second set of statements reports your information on a fund basis, and that's probably what you're used to seeing on a monthly, quarterly, whatever basis. And they're reported in columns for major funds, and then there's calculation done, figure out which ones are the major funds, and then everything else is collapsed in a, another column. So the focus is generally the general fund, because that's where most of your operations are running through. So just a real quick highlight, I just want to point out that your revenues from '15 to '16 went up over $1 million, so that was a nice increase. And expenditures went up as well, but not as much, so that you had a, an overall change in fund balance, increase in general fund balance of $700,000, which was an improvement over the year before. So your fund balances are strong and improving each year. There is a separate set of statements in there for the golf course. The golf course did have a good year last year, better year than the one before, so that's good. You like to see improvement there. The notes to the financial statement are quite lengthy, but they really, if you're interested in knowing it, they really give you a nice explanation of how the statements work, and how things are recognized, and things like that. So I always start with the notes when I look at a financial statement, because you can get the most information out of them. Okay? So that's all I had on the financial statements, if you had any questions about that? Nope. And then I just quickly wanted to note that we report, we would report to you if we found any internal control deficiencies or other problems that we would see while we're doing the work, and I'm happy to report that we did not note any material deficiencies, material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies. Having Linda Major and Vicky Mastrow coming in on a, on a regular basis is an excellent control, and has really kept your books in really good shape. And in fact, another thing that we report, so we send you two letters. One is the report on the deficiencies, and the other one is, we call the governance letter, where we would let you know of any problems we had, any difficulties, things like that. And the other thing that we note in this letter is whether or not we've adjusted your financial statements at all from the first set that we got, and we did not. So the numbers that we got, that you're getting, are excellent.
Thank you. All good news.
I don't have any questions, just a couple comments. I'm really glad to see that we have a good, healthy fund balance, and that the golf course is headed straight up, so that's really good to see. Is there any comment or questions from the public?
It's all good.
All good?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the RACP presentation, which is by Judy Goldstein. Judy, you can fill us in on what RACP is and...
Ah, it's a grant, federal money, distributed through the state, redevelopment assistance community projects, I believe is what it is. Can you, am I wrong?
Something like that.
Okay. It's $1.765 million.
That's the important part.
That was the important part.
And this was the grant that was secured to us by Representative O'Neill, correct?
Correct, in 2013.
So we've talked about this for quite some time.
That's what we've been doing.
Really, that's how far back this goes.
Oh, okay, the dates I had in the form were...
That's when we recaptured.
2003, 2004 was the beginning of this.
Thank you. Okay, I had the...
It's finally come to...
The forms I had were the recapture.
I don't think the funds were released until 2013.
And the funds weren't released until 2013, correct? Is that how that? But it's finally come to paper, which is terrific, so great.
Right.
So I'm sorry, Judy, go ahead.
That's, that's fine. Slide one shows the Warminster Community Park, the area development. It's a 240-acre park that we all know and love, and it's used, it's well-used, and we're gonna show you how it can be even better used. The first slide includes the information that's proposed as part of the DCNR grant, Department of Community and Natural Resources, and the Bucks County Municipal Open Space Program grants. Together, those grants total, well, actually, the project totals $1.376 million. The county grant was $647,900. The DCNR grant is $500,000, and a township contribution, at least on the form, of $228,000. And that project is on this slide, because the RACP project builds on that. So the project that's currently in design, Gilmore's working on the design, it'll be going out to bid soon-ish.
And that's on the county grant. We discussed this, it was a little confusing.
Yeah, it's the county grant and the state grant, DCNR.
Right.
And that includes two baseball fields, a soccer field, which is championship size, a pavilion, a spray park, entrance improvements at Bristol Road. That includes removing the trail that's on the outside of the fence, pulling the trail back at the entrance for a proper crossing, and some intersection improvements required by Pendott. Two parking lots, stormwater management areas, and utilities. So that's, that's that project. And then if you can go to the next slide. Amanda, thank you. So all those things are in the yellow on this. We highlighted them as yellow, so they're not part of the RACP grant. And in front of you, you have the eight-and-a-half by elevens, but you also have eleven-by-seventeens, if you want to try to read them, they're shrunk. So the RACP grant, that is what is not in yellow on this plan. It includes two flat fields, multi-use fields, near the baseball fields that were posed as part of the first grant. New park roadway alignment, so take the roadways that comes in from Bristol Road, and continue it through the park to connect through with traffic calming, change of direction, change of texture, and gates, so that it can be closed off, or it can be opened as the township sees fit, but gives the opportunity for both in the future, so you don't have one or the other. This gives you total flexibility. You can have it totally closed off or totally open, and the park functions in both ways.
Right, and I just want to clarify that a little bit. We're not gonna have direct cut-through from Bristol Road to Johnsville, but the availability will be there in case there's an event or something that we'll be able to open it up, that there's an event that people can access from both ends.
And even if there is an event and it's open, the traffic patterns, as you come in, if you look at the top, the top drawing on the slide, you see the yellow coming in from the right. It splits off with some green in between, so it splits off into one-way, each direction with an island in the middle, which is part of what we're calling the runway diet.
Right, and it'll slow traffic down as well, so...
Right, so, and even if the gate is open, it's not a straight shot.
Right.
That was our point there. We were sort of doing double, triple layers of protection for the township and the residents in there.
Excellent.
Next takes us to the runway diet, which is what we call it, sorry, we're on the... The areas of green are where the runway is being greened up. You don't just put soil on top of the runway, you actually dig it out with your public works department. We were fortunate enough to have some excellent guys out there, and we did some drilling down, actually, weaving, the royal weave. They did the drilling, and I looked at it, and went down to see how far down the runway went, and we had some good news. We're able to do a bit of runway diet.
Oh, good. At some points, it's like six feet, at some points, but I think that's further up.
It, not in here. We didn't go beyond, like, 50 inches, I think, on this one.
Which will save us quite a bit of money, am I correct?
Yes. So instead of the estimated, like, $100 cubic foot, or square foot to go down, we were closer to, like, $35. Then we had the soil coming back in. It's substantial, but we're able to get more bang for our buck. It's substantial, but we're able to get more bang for our buck. And that also helps the numbers on the other grant project that Gilmore's working on now because they use the high numbers as we had done originally, but there's PennDOT improvements, so there's an offset there. We have the money for it.
Excellent.
So, the runway diet includes a lot of greening, and the greening areas would also include trees, and that helps us with traffic flow and delineation between different activities, like around the basketball courts, there'll be some greening. Greening to enhance the traffic patterns, both along the major driveway and also into and around the parking areas. That also gives us shade, which is vastly important in the areas of recreation on the runway. It also includes two modular restrooms, basketball court, sand volleyball, bocce, horse shoe pits, mill and overlay the runway where the runway is being retained for parking, driveway, or recreational amenity areas. Parking areas, lighting, which will carry through the lighting theme that you see if you come in from, like, the Annes Choice side, you see the lighting that will be carried through along the entire driveway. Perimeter fence, this is a big one. The chain-link fence will be gone along Bristol Road and Newtown Road, and it will be replaced with a five-foot tall, four-rail fence that will match the North Hampton side. That in itself will be a major improvement.
Definitely.
And then also includes a playground as a bid alternate. And if we go to the next slide now, Amanda, sorry. The base bid, once we add in the estimate for engineering services, is just about at your grant at $1.76-ish. And bid alternate would be the benches, trees, and playground. Benches and trees could be added at any time. It would be nice if it could all be put in the beginning, but there are things that are easy to come out. Benches, Karen, your Park and Rec Director is excellent on getting things through CoStarz and stocking up on sales so they can be added later. Trees could always be added later. And the playground also could be purchased separately on CoStarz if need be, so there are things we would pull out. And that would be just shy of $200,000 for that additional part. And next slide is just questions, if anyone has any.
I just have comments. We've been talking about this in our Parks and Rec meetings, to have these improvements, the chain-link fence, hoping that the cement wasn't that deep, you know, that it would be more cost-effective to have these additional, the lighting, and even, like, you know, taking care of the water. But having the opening there on Bristol Road, but making it easy, you know, greening things up. We've been wanting to do that all around the township, so that also works with our comprehensive plan board. We'd like to have that. So, I like all the improvements. I think they're great. I think you did a great job on the plan. Thank you.
It was a collaborative effort. It wasn't just me. It was the township, it was Park and Rec, and my staff back in the office. So, it was a group effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question. I saw where it was mentioned about the chain-link fence, especially the parts that fall into the rear of certain properties, that we're going to leave those. Now, the reason why we're leaving those, other than the fact that the homeowners there liked it, it's also because of that, I guess, what is it? The fencing that we're going to be installing wouldn't be going behind those properties, right?
Correct. The area where the chain-link fence would remain would be the areas where the new fencing is not going in.
Right.
And there's also one section along Bristol Road, there's a little chunk that chain-link will stay around, that little out parcel in front.
Okay, okay. And then the only other statement I'll say is, I know that you mentioned the spray park in the beginning, I already got my answers to this, so I know that the spray park funding doesn't come from this grant, it comes from the other grant.
Correct.
But I just think that, like, that's going to be a gem.
It's going to be amazing.
That's going to be amazing as an attractor, and coupled with these improvements, I'm really looking forward to it. So, great job.
Thank you. Yeah, and the spray park, I can't take credit for it, but thank you anyway.
Karen's wish list for a while. Well, the whole group, I have to say. Like you said, a lot of people involved.
Yeah, we just had the part of putting it all into the plan.
Any other comments or questions from board? No, I think it's really well-done, Judy. I'm looking forward to it as a former Park Board member. I know Karen's been working on this for years, just to get it to this point. We finally can see, you know, some light at the end of the tunnel here, I think. So, just walk me through what'll happen next. The DCNR grant will be going first, am I correct?
The plans for the DCNR and the Municipal Open Space Program from the county...
Which is the county open space grant.
That's together, right.
Right.
There are being, those plans and construction documents are being prepared by Gilmore and Associates now. Craig's people are working on that. They need to be approved by DCNR, and then they can go to bid, and we're hoping fall, I believe, correct, Craig?
I think so. That's, the last meeting, least I have, is back in May, I think, with the staff, and I heard fall too, so I hope we're still in there. I don't have an update tonight, I didn't know that I need to, but I haven't heard any issues. Karen's nodding her head, so it was good.
Right. So, that needs to go in, and the way the improvements for the RACP grant are designed, they sort of piggyback on top of the other improvements first, so they need to go in.
Right.
And my hope is that as soon as the plans for the first part are done, Gilmore can then work on the detailed plans and construction documentation for the RACP grant. But before we do that, we do need to have a meeting with Dan Tech, who are the administrators on behalf of the state for the RACP grant, for the change in scope. We do not anticipate any problems with that, but as a formality, we need to do that.
Right, understood.
And that can happen soon. Shortly after you, as a board, say yes, go ahead.
Over the next two years, we're going to be seeing a lot of construction activity over in the park, big changes.
Can I just ask? I'm sorry, Mark.
Go ahead.
Ballpark, when do you expect to break ground on any of these projects?
Ballpark, for the first part, the DCNR and open space one, I'm anticipating late this year or as soon as you can dig it in.
Yeah.
Right.
And the next one should be the year behind it.
Okay.
For breaking ground.
Okay.
Because we figure we'll need to have the construction through the summer next year, probably. And we could start as early as the fall, but I don't want to say that you're going to have your plans finalized in the winter.
Yeah, I mean, it depends what comments you get back and the weather. I mean, fall's cutting it close to have everything wrapped up and then get right into construction and mobilize and stuff. But, you know, to be honest with you, it depends if it's a mild winter and, you know, depending on contractors and, you know, really the township staff as well, that's, I mean, it's a big team here, a lot of moving parts, but so far, everything's been going well. As long as Karen keeps nodding her head on everything Judy says, and I say, then we're happy. And honestly, I haven't heard any issues come up yet. You know, it's good to have different pieces. Everybody has the eyes on it, Judy, Karen back in my office, myself, and obviously the township staff. So, if we get a mild winter, then, you know, we can push through, you know.
Thank you. It's like the whole team, Kathy and Karen, Seth Judy, and all the staff here, your whole team, doing a phenomenal job, and our dreams are finally going to come true, so I'm really happy about it, excited. Can't wait for break ground. Thank you.
Is there any questions or comment from the public on Judy's presentation? Anyone in the room have any questions? Sure, come on. Tell us who you are. Yes, please.
Jim Boyle, Bloomingdale, 368 Bloomingdale Avenue. I'm sure this has been considered, but if I understand correctly, so you're going to dig up some of the runway to add some green to it?
Correct.
I mean, I'm not sure this has been considered, but, you know, nearby Shenandoah Woods, they've been told they can't dig it for basements because of ground contamination. Is that something that's been tested and thought about?
Actually, that's an excellent question, and as a rule, we don't dig where there would be contamination. These areas have been clean areas. So, yes, that has been considered. We do appreciate the double-checking on the question, but yes, it has been considered, and we're clean.
Sorry, there's one more thing.
Take your time.
I remember, and I might be wrong about this, but during the development for a couple of development properties, especially on Little Lane, I think one of the stipulations was that each house would be a fee that would be put into the ball field fund. Is that fund being used in this project?
Yeah, that money's been collected, or is the process being collected? I think, do we have them all yet, or? Okay, I know one of developments was paying all upfront, and, oh, we do? Oh, we got some more today. So, yes, we are in the process of collecting that, and yes, it will be used for the project.
Do you know how much, what kind of revenues can collect us so far?
A hundred dollars.
For the...
Well, I think it's $2,500 for a house.
For the...
I'm, sorry, $110.
Right. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Judy or comments on the... Well, we'll see now. I'm going to just ask for a board consensus that we approve this, that we, I don't think we need to take formal action, but a board consensus is required.
Yeah, no formal action is required. The last time we talked about the RACP grant, there was a question about would this be coming back and how often. I said it would be coming back several times. This is probably the biggest one, so if you could give your conceptual consensus approval, conceptual approval, that would be fantastic. We will be coming back at other steps. There, I believe there's a memo in your packet that Kathy put together that really outlines all the steps that have to take. So, it will come before you, but if there's any changes that you would like to see or any concerns, we prefer to have them now rather than go down the path of putting all the documents together and then have changes later. But right now, just a conceptual approval, like consensus, is fine with us.
It seems like the board's locked up on this one, so...
Yeah.
Excellent.
The only thing that I would say, which wouldn't affect this, I don't think, one iota, but I think at some point, we need to add some additional wind screening through plantings and whatnot down there. I mean, I know it's at, like, a pretty high, elevation-wise, I think it's up there within the township, within the 10-square-mile radius of the township. So, I think that if you ever go down there before, you know, late spring or early fall, it's...
The plantings that were shown on the first part, the DCNR Municipal Open Space Program, deal with some of those areas, and then we're showing a lot of plantings on the next phase, which could be part of your basically, their bid alternate. But yeah, there were substantial plantings to deal with shade, wind, and also barriers so people don't drive through, because everything that we're posing is to all the runway.
That's very exciting.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Judy. Very well-done.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next up on tonight's agenda is the capital improvement plan with our Public Works Director, Eric Hines, and I think Amanda Zimmerman, our Assistant Township Manager, is participating in this presentation.
Hi, Eric.
Eric, how are you?
This sheet right here.
And our packets in front of us have a spreadsheet on this.
Right here.
So, I'll go ahead and kick things off. You know, first, we've been talking about a capital plan for a few months now. It's critical that we have a capital improvement plan. Every community have one. We have a lot of assets in the township. The taxpayers have invested a lot of money in our roads, our buildings, our equipment, and it's our responsibility to make sure it's maintained properly, it is also replaced properly. Everything has a life cycle, and we have to take that into account. The capital improvement plan is the document that handles that. It's a document that says over the next five years, here are planned replacements or improvements or anything else of a capital nature that we are planning to do, at least we're recommending to do. I want to stress, it's not a spending document. It's not a budget document. Every year, we have to make choices. So, you'll see things that we have slated for 2018, that when the budget comes up and we look at the numbers, we're simply not going to be able to afford, and we'll have to push it out or look at alternatives. That's a choice that we're going to have to make every single year. So, Eric and Amanda have been working together with all department heads to take into account all of our capital needs and put it to paper and plan it out over the next five years. So, Erica, you know, I'll kick it over to you for a little bit.
I don't really...
For a little bit.
So, the CIP, to me, was brand-new. I didn't even know what CIP was when I started, and Craig explained to me what it was, and then with Amanda's help, we did some research together. For me, as the new Public Works Director, this was more of an information gathering session with all the department heads, researching what their biggest needs were, whether it was facilities, vehicles, there's so many different things in the CIP that people are looking forward to improving in the township. It was hard for people to get their heads around it because the money, it didn't, you didn't really have to know where the money was coming from. Yeah, exactly. That was something that really was hard to explain to everyone.
I'll add a little bit on that. One of the things of the capital improvement plan is, it doesn't matter if it's grant-funded, if it's taxpayer-funded, or if it's through an enterprise fund over at the golf course, you still get it down on the plan. The funding source you consider at a different time. But go ahead.
No, that's pretty much done. It's a long-range planning tool for these projects, which are, you know, pretty substantial. It has to be at least a $20,000 project as a rule for the CIP, and they can go upwards of, you know, a lot of money for some of these projects. But it's a great tool to look at the challenges we're going to face in the next five years.
We're not going to go through this line by line. You can go ahead and take a look, and if you have questions now or at a later date, you know, please feel free to let us know. But we have a slide up there with just some highlights over five years of what we're looking at with some of our facilities and some of our operations. And you can see the things that we're looking at here. These are, a lot of them are not wants, they're really needs. You know, we're going to have to replace roofs, we have foundation issues, we're going to have to replace windows, there are ADA compliance issues that we have to deal with. So, a lot of these are facility-related that we're going to have to look at over the next few years, just to maintain what we already have. Later on in the evening, we'll have a discussion on municipal complex, and this plays into that because we're going to be talking about where we invest our money and making sure we invest it properly for the future. We don't want to go ahead and spend money and then find out we're going a different direction a couple of years later, or spend money on a solution which only solves half the problem and not all the problem. Those are some things that we're going to have to grapple with over the next few years, but the start of it was putting this plan together. So, again, up on the slide, you can see where we are over the next five years with some of our capital needs. Some of them are just the normal course of business, dump trucks, for instance, for Public Works. Those are regular yearly purchases, and we talked about funding source. Those are things we typically take out of liquid fuels. You know, you see other things in there, like a new salt storage building. Ours is exposed right now, and we really don't have proper storage. That impacts operations. So, we have, you know, I believe that's a $600,000.
$350,000.
$350,000, sorry.
We've been thinking that around for a couple of years.
That's been talked about for a while.
And your predecessors as well, that's been...
Yeah. And it's a changing document. It gets revisited every year, things get moved up and things get moved back.
Yeah, and our goal is to get on a regular cycle where we're doing the budget process in the fall and into the winter to close out the year. And then starting in spring and going into summer, we're working on the capital improvement plan. So, you keep that cycle up, where you try not to work on both of them together, and what you do in the capital improvement plan flows into the following year's budget. But this is taking us a large step forward with Eric and Amanda's help and all the department heads on putting that base plan in place. Again, if there's any questions, I know this is the first time you're seeing it, you know, please let us know now, next meeting, or in the intervening time, we'd be happy to answer or sit down with any of you.
I just have one quick question. How do you decide which of these improvements that you're going to do first? Is it based on how bad the need is, or, you know, what the disrepair is, or, like, how do you decide which one you choose?
It's, that's an excellent question. And there is no single answer because it varies from community to community. So, I'm going to let you know how I go ahead and what my matrix is. And there are other matrices out there that you can go ahead and assign point values and do all these intricate calculations, but essentially, the first thing you look at is what is mandated? You know, if we have, and I look at ADA compliance as an issue, if we have a mandate that we have to go ahead and comply with, that automatically rises right to left, right to left. There's no option there.
Okay.
The second thing that I look at is public safety, you know, and that and make sure our roads are safe, our facilities are safe. So, if there's anything that touches public safety, which I believe is one of the core functions of government, I think that's also high up on the list. And the next thing I look at in terms of infrastructure is preserving what we have for the long term. Sometimes you have to make trade-offs in that area, and a good example is roads. You know, we would like to be paving 10 miles of roads every year, but we can't, so we're up around five right now. But that's kind of the hierarchy that I go ahead and put in place, and it really starts with mandates, you know, goes on to public safety, then it goes on to maintaining our infrastructure. The woven into all of that is also changes in our operations. So, just because we already have this number of dump trucks or these facilities doesn't mean that we're going to continue that in the future. There may be better operational efficiencies we can employ, changes that we can put in place, so we want to go ahead and take that into account as well and build that into the plan if we think there's a better way of dealing things. But that's the general hierarchy that I use to approach it.
You made that really simple, so thank you.
I just wanted to add, in my experience, also funding type. So some of these projects, you may get a grant, you heard about DCNR and RACP, but you may get some smaller grants, a transportation grant that the golf course may not qualify or your building, but something else as far as ADA compliance or things like that. So sometimes in other municipalities, you see that the funding will push another project, hey, we can go for this, the match is easy, you have the funds set aside, might not be a top priority or something that Mr. Schuster said, but there's funding available and it's easily obtained. So that's another one that I see quite a bit in other municipalities.
Well, thank you for that.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything for Eric?
Great job with the...
Anyone in the public have any comment?
Yeah.
Questions? And I just want to congratulate you on, I think, finishing the road program in record time this year. Really well done.
Yeah, thanks.
I think we talked before the meeting, there's possibility maybe some supplemental paving.
Yep, we're looking at that too, yep.
So that'll be great.
They did a great job.
Yeah, thank you.
Half of them were Karen's guys, so thank you Karen.
Yes, and tell the fellows, well done.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm getting some nice comments from some residents Eric, so thank you.
Okay, next up on tonight's agenda is public comment. Township residents have the opportunity at this time to comment on any non-agenda items subject to the five-minute guideline as recognized by the Chair. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Oh sure, come on up sir, please.
Yeah, my name is Gene Dyer, and I live in Cornet Road. Over there, we have two buildings, I'm not even going to call them homes. They're vacant, they've been vacant for a long time. One of them, there's been people that have seen rodents, groundhogs, rats, and that's why I'm here.
Mr. Schuster?
I've called the township, the township recommended I call the county. The county told me to write a letter. I wrote a letter last month. As far as I know, nothing has been done. I wish we could get together a little bit, do, there's a lot of big projects that I've heard, but we don't like to have rats in a community. I'd like to get some feedback.
Sure. Thank you for the comments. You know, what we can do is we can follow up with Bucks County, was it the Health Department that you reached out to?
Yes, sir.
We can follow up with them. You know, unfortunately, we don't have any ordinances that deal with this specific issue. We understand it's a quality of life issue, and no one wants to see rodents around vacant properties. So let us go ahead and try to coordinate with Bucks County and see if they can bring their resources on this.
Can the township send a letter?
Just as an FYI, the one house, we got notified today, I think it's 1059 on Cornet?
Burned out.
The burned out house, there'll be a closing on that house next week. So new people will be purchasing that house, so you should see changes to that house.
Okay. The one that I'm talking about with the rodents, we have young citizens, four, five years old. We have a lot of people that walk their dogs back and forth. I live there, and I'm old and I'm not very fast, not as fast as I used to be. But I don't want to run a foot race with a rat. And so, if you could please just put a little pressure on somewhere. The lady that lives next door called a company, and they were there within 45 minutes, and they put out, I don't know what kind of traps they are, but they were there and what they had to do to protect her house. Maybe I could suggest the township do something like that in the near future?
That's not on private property, it's not something we're authorized to do. But I do recognize the health issue that is there, and we're definitely going to reach out to the county and do what we can to help them solve the situation.
Here's a letter that I wrote. It's not very long, it's not very complicated for your reference.
Okay, I'll take it. Thank you very much. We will follow up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Schuster? Yes?
I would like to say one more thing.
Sure.
I've been a resident for, oh, a long time, since 1974. And I've seen the township go up and down. Right now, it seems to be pretty near on the top. So thank you for doing a great job.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for your comments.
Mr. Schuster, what would we expect, just really vaguely, I'm not asking for step by step, or Mr. Peters?
Sure.
What kind of remedy would the health, the county health department be able to offer?
They could go so far as to condemn the property.
Okay.
If they had to. I'll note that this was sent on June 28th, so we should follow up, but be somewhat cognizant of the timing.
Okay.
If we could do that, that would be great.
Absolutely.
So you could get an answer.
Absolutely. And I found them to be very nice to work with.
I don't blame you, I wouldn't want to live next door to that either, so.
They respond pretty quickly, especially if there's children involved and all that with rats, and that could be pretty nasty.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Speaking for the whole neighborhood, I've talked to several of them, and they wanted to say...
We'll stay on them, we'll stay on it, we will.
We appreciate you coming and speaking on behalf of your neighborhood.
Well, we have a nice neighborhood.
You want to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. So any other public comment? First round, sure, come on up.
Yeah, my name's Jesse Good. My father is away right now, his name's Andrew Good. I was just here to follow up on the 1228 Ben Lane, when it rains, our...
On the driveway?
Yeah. You know, we did, I'm sorry, we did follow up with your father, I believe, I believe our Public Works Director did. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
Oh, I'm sorry, do I have the proper...
He did not speak, Mr. Good, and I did not get a call.
Okay, my understanding of the investigation was that there was, the issue was there prior to the changes that were made to the roadway, is that correct?
Eric, you have to take the microphone, if you're going to talk, so folks can hear you.
So, now, can I see your, just for a second? So when we do milling and paving on roads, really the concept is we're just going to take out an inch and a half of asphalt and put an inch and a half back. Mr. Good lives at the end of the cul-de-sac, right?
Yes.
And he's saying that water is coming down into his driveway that wasn't before.
Yes.
And what we're saying is that we're not really sure how that can happen, if we only just took out what was there and put back what was there. You understand?
Right.
So we're not sure what the problem is.
Okay.
And we're kind of saying we didn't cause it, it had to have been existing before, because we didn't change the grade of the roadway, we didn't raise it or lower it.
I was like, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, what can we do, what can he do?
Could you talk into the microphone?
Well, if there's something he wants to do, that's fine, I'll come out and meet him, and we can go over ideas when he gets back.
I mean, perhaps the best thing is, when's your father returning?
Sunday.
Sunday, okay. Well, why don't we go ahead, and if you guys could coordinate and, you know, through Eric and set up a meeting and see if there's, you know, a solution that he would like to offer. But, you know, and I apologize that we didn't get in touch with him, I thought that occurred, so my, please pass along my apologies for that. But right now, it doesn't, we don't see how a change in the roadway, or at least the milling and the paving, would have changed the water flow. So, but we are willing to go ahead and sit down further and have a conversation.
Let me give you one of my cards, and I'll put my cellphone on them, okay?
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you guys.
Any other public comment? Okay, so now I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's consent agenda is as follows. Item number A is your minutes from the June 15th, 2017 meeting. Item B is an MOU with Ange Choice. They have been gracious enough to allow us to put an antenna on their roof for coverage for EMS and Public Works for a very small cost. Item C is approval and agreement with irrigation consultant for the Five Ponds Golf Course. Speaking of capital projects, we have a significant one that's going to occur there over the next year or two, the replacement of the irrigation system, that would be in the area of half a million dollars or more. So we want to bring in the appropriate expertise to help us look at that situation and draft the appropriate specifications. Item D is a proclamation for Eagles, for an Eagle Scout, Billy Sully, that would be presented in the future at his Court of Honor. Item E is the final release from Prestige Properties for 216 Maple Street in the amount of $42,302 as recommended by the engineer. Item F is the legal and engineering escrow release for stations at Bucks West for $10,003. Item G is the legal and engineering escrow release for Franklin Corp., Lot 3, in the amount of $40,110. Item H is payment number two for the 2017 curb ramp installation contract to Reamsdown Excavating in the amount of $46,569 as recommended by the engineer. Item I is authorization to advertise the public notice for the township's MS4 pollution reduction plan. You have this, a draft of this in your packet, this is for advertisement purposes only, this will be on your agenda at the August meeting, and I believe Karen will be here to present that to you. Item J is authorization to advertise the bid for the Warminster Library HVAC project, that's a grant-funded project. The advertisement would be on hold pending approval by the state of the bid specifications. Item K is the fuel contract for 2017 and 2018, that was done through the Bucks County Consortium. Item L is the document disposal resolution, it's a standard document disposal, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of these are from LNI.
They are duplicate zoning hearing board files that we got from the attorneys and some other, some very, some old escrows and other cleanup stuff.
Thank you. And item M was, I'm sorry, we had to add that to the agenda today, that is approval of an electricity supply contract. That is a 48-month contract for the supply of electricity to our facilities. We are estimating that this would save us approximately $40,000 per year.
Wow.
And that was done through a reverse auction this afternoon.
Okay. That is the consent agenda. Before I ask for a motion, I just want to mention item G, the proclamation for the Eagle Scout is on the table in the conference room, if everyone could stop in and sign that so we can deliver that. With that, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Fresca Tour, any further comment from the board?
Just glad we're saving $40,000 on electricity supply contract, thank you Greg.
I'll make Larry here.
Yes.
Any comment from the public? Seeing none, call to question, all in favor?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next up is Treasurer's Report, Mr. Monroe.
Mr. Chairman, tonight we have a bill list dated July 20th, 2017, in the amount of $1,683,024.75, as well as a supplemental bill list dated June 30th, 2017, in the amount of $1,026,975.33, and transfers for June in the amount of $137,532.81.
Okay. Is there a second? Mr. Monroe, or Mr. Crowie? Any questions from the board, Treasurer's Report, comments? Any from the public? Seeing none, call to question, all in favor?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye, motion carries. Item B is the June financial statement, Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The item that I've been reporting on the last couple of meetings was the earned income tax. I had mentioned that it was a little soft, but I was hypothesizing that it was a timing issue. Fortunately, that turned out to be correct. EIT has bounced back, in fact, it's better than we were last year, and exceeding what we even budgeted for this year. So that, the financial is strong. Business privilege tax has exceeded what we have budgeted, so that's a good thing, a lot of that is due to the delinquent collections that we've had with our collection agent that we brought on board, cable TV, franchise fees are also up. Expenditures are tracking the budget for the most part. You'll note that in the report, it was 40 some odd percent expended. Don't forget, there are some larger expenditures that come throughout the year and later on in the year, whether it be pension expenditures or other transfers that have to happen. But that's all I really have to report, everything is looking good. One other thing I'll go ahead and note is, we had planned to acquire, we have acquired a public, sorry, a park and rec vehicle. We had planned to finance that over a few years, but after getting the finance documentation, which would have the finance a little bit under 6%, that we thought that was not a wise choice. So we're going to reshuffle a few things around, just do an outright purchase rather than pay 6%, which was pretty high for a municipality to go ahead and pay. And that is all I have on the financials unless there's any questions.
Questions? Any from the public? And I wanted to mention, I just handed a note that we are back on Verizon, so hopefully we're back on this day, take back everything we said about you.
That's okay, they didn't hear.
With that, we'll move on to unfinished business, consider adoption of ordinance 739, intergovernmental recycling agreement, Mr. Peters.
Actually, I...
Do you want to take that one?
I will take this one.
Okay. He was ready.
You want to go for it?
Sure, sure. So back in 2014, you approved an intergovernmental agreement with North Hampton Township, Lower Southampton Township, Upper Southampton, and it was for purposes of the collection of recycling data. I'm sure that you are more familiar with it than I am, since this is my first night here, but all we're doing here is formally adopting an ordinance, which is required under the Intermunicipal Act. So this should have been done back in 2014, frankly, we're just ratifying the agreement. It's been advertised, it's ready for enactment, and I would recommend that you so enact.
Okay, so is there a motion to adopt ordinance 739?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Crowie, any other discussion from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, call to question, all in favor?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Can I make one little comment on that? It is a little quirk that you, for intermunicipal agreements, you do have to adopt an ordinance. However, I do understand that there is legislation pending right now that would allow governments or municipalities to do these agreements just by resolution. So if you have a chance to talk to any of your state reps or senators, you might want to put a bug in the ear to support that, which would make everyone's lives a lot easier than having to go through the whole formal ordinance adoption process.
Advertisement and all that, yeah.
Okay. You good?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to new business, item A, volunteer firefighter tax relief, Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board had requested a few meetings ago to look into this program, which is now allowable under state law. My comments at the time that I, was that I wanted to look at the financials and make sure everyone had a financial understanding of what would occur if we enacted this program. Through Joe Velton's hard work and coordinating with the two fire companies, we were able to get a variety of numbers, which you have in front of you and in the packet, as to the estimated financial impact. So what we're looking at here, and we had to use straight averages, because we don't know what every firefighter makes for their income, nor do we know what their property value is and what taxes they pay. So what we did is we just took the average for everyone in the township. This is going to fluctuate year over year, but this is the best estimate that I think we can come up with at the time. So if you were to look at Warminster Fire Company and Hartsfield Fire Company together, now you're looking at a total of 73 residents and 42 property owners. The savings that they would get, or sorry, the relief that they would receive would be in two areas. One would be the earned income tax, so they would get certain relief there. The second option, or second category, is on their property tax, which does have a 20% limit. So the max that they can get off as a discount would be 20%. If you look at the second grouping of boxes, I showed what the average savings would be. And so the average individual savings of earned income tax would be $205 per year, and the average savings for property tax would be $88 per year. So a total of a shade under 300, assuming they both have income and property that they're getting relief for. Putting that all together, multiplying that against the amount of people in their departments that would qualify for that, you're looking at a net reduction to our taxable income of around, a little under $19,000. Again, this is a pure estimate, it would change from year to year as firefighters come and go, but that is a good ballpark figure for you to go ahead and use. So that's the financials. If your next question is, can we afford that? The answer is, obviously, $19,000, $20,000 is significant, but in the budget our size and with the understanding of where it's going, we definitely could sustain that and not really have a significant impact.
So does this require ordinance, or can we just do this?
So this would require an ordinance. So the next step is, if the board is so inclined, we would have to go ahead and draft the ordinance, or Solicitor's Office would draft the ordinance. The only thing that we have to figure out next is the qualifiers. The issue that we're going to have, or... The issue that we're going to have, or potentially have, is that we have two different fire companies that have two different sets of qualifiers. That may be okay, but we may have to somehow combine them in the ordinance. But, that's something that the Solicitor will figure out. And we're currently trying to get the, we have, from Hartsville, I believe, we have the qualifiers, and we're trying to get them from Warminster right now. Warminster, okay. So, that's in progress right now. And as soon as we have that, the ordinance can be drafted if the Board is so inclined.
Oh, I'm going to ask for a motion to direct the Solicitor to draft the ordinance, then we can have discussion, so.
Motion.
Is there a motion? Ms. Frescatore, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. McPhillips? Is there any discussion from the Board? I'll start off by saying I think this is, anything we can do to help these volunteers, I'm, I'm all for, so.
I agree. Any relief we can give them, and it might be an incentive too, for, to, to gain more firefighters in our, in our township, so I think it's a good idea.
Excellent.
Is that part of the reason why we're looking at doing this, was because of the, the difficulty of obtaining volunteers?
That is the, part of the impetus around passing the state law, yes. I think you have to look and see, you know, on a case-by-case basis, whether this would go ahead and incentivize people to join, or incentivize them to stay as a firefighter. But, that was certainly, was part of the reason why the law wasn't acted.
So, what we're talking about is usually, I think, Act 172, and I, I had an opportunity to talk to firefighters from Hartsville and Warminster. They obviously would appreciate this. And what this really is, is to draw attention for the need for volunteer firefighters. I personally think in Warminster, we're heading towards paid firefighters. That's down the road, but this also could be utilized in the event that we do go towards paid firefighters. I don't necessarily know, in my opinion, from the firefighters I was talking to, if it would draw in new volunteers. If more like the existing firefighters, it would be an added benefit for them, as I would see. Joe, maybe you'd want to comment on this?
So, I'll speak as a volunteer firefighter of Hartsville, about 30 years in the service. This is not going to draw an 18-year-old. You're not going to get that kid. They don't even think of that stuff. But, it's not going to hurt. I mean, so, I'm a property owner, I work in a township, I live in a township, so it's just, it's just a, a boost, and that's what we're looking at. It's, it's a part of a bigger incentive program, and both fire companies have incentive programs. This is adding to it, so it's a cumulative effect. So, we'll have the taxes, we'll have what, and what each fire department already does. So, it's helping. It's not hurting, but it's helping. And as for the, the qualifiers for who's active and who's not, one of the things we're going to try and do is reduce, because every time the state comes up with a program, it adds administrative work to the volunteers. So, everything they do, training, fire suppression, report writing, all that stuff, it's all got an administrative background to it. It's paperwork. So, one fire call could draw another eight hours in, in time and stuff like that. So, every time they come up with a grant program or something like that, it, it does take time. So, we're going to try and utilize the programs that they're using right now that qualify active firefighters, and try and see if we can get that into that ordinance, so we don't make another burden for them for this dollar amount.
So, that's a good point. So, it's not just for the firefighters who actually go out and hop in a truck and fight a fire, it's for the people who are in the office, for donating towards it. As I read the legislation, they also-
It's for how, it's for being an active member-
Regardless.
-of the volunteer fire organization. How fire companies do it, they may do it just for the firefighters, or they may do it for all of them, independently throughout the state, that's how they-
That'd be great.
You know, you have to look at your own organization and see how we, you know, what do we, what are our needs? And, so those change. But, yeah, it could be for any member.
So, in our case, it's for everybody that works in the fire department, right?
Well, the two, we'll, we'll go over the, what the two fire departments present as their thing, and then we'll know.
Okay.
You'll get that information eventually.
Thank you.
Explicitly.
Yeah. One thing I would want to point out is, this would only be applicable to residents of the township. You have cases, you know, I imagine, like over in Hartsville, where you could have some residents that are members there, or sorry, Warwick residents that are members of Hartsville, this would not apply to them.
And Warminster, I mean, there's some hapro guys.
Yes.
Yeah. It's, and that's common throughout all fire companies, volunteer fire companies.
I, I just wanted to make sure it was clear that we don't have the legal authority to go ahead and forgive taxes for non-residents.
Right.
It's, since you're up here, a couple, about a month or two ago, I saw that there was a, there was a, an article that was written about my old stomping grounds out in Berwyn Fire Department with respect to a program that they run that allows, under certain controlled instances, high school students to respond.
To leave school?
To leave school. They got, I think, about seven new volunteers the first year under that program. I think I had submitted it through Greg, and I was just wondering if it's something that you've thought anything more with respect?
Oh, I have. I know. It's, I was- I was chief of the Hartsville for six years way back when, so I had to look at all the things like that, and it's, it's a, it's a big responsibility.
Right.
So, we're, we're taking somebody out of their education component, putting them in some kind of vehicle, having them drive to a firehouse, and time is the element there. As you know, we had to get an apparatus on the road in four minutes.
Right.
We don't need these kids running through the school hallway, he's running out to the parking lot and stuff like that. So, there's a time component, but there's also, we have found that kids joining groups, so if they have a lot of buddies and want, and they bring them in, that's how, that's how we have grown, at, at least at Hartsville, or we have a cadet program over there, and we get 14 and 15-year-olds. They bring a buddy in, and they bring a buddy. And we don't have an area that we only say they be Hartsville. This is everywhere. So, we have Willow Grove, Hapro, Warrington, Doylestown, everywhere, they come to this cadet program, and they bring their buddies in. And then, when they turn 16, they're allowed to do that fire training program, get them into the fire schools, we send them off to their own fire companies. But, we have a lot to stay also. So, but, we found that we grow because they bring their friends in, they come in as groups. So, whether it's through a school program, MBIT runs a Fire Academy program, and we got a lot of kids through that, but we find them, is if they join in groups with their buddies, they, they stick around.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you did any follow-up with respect to the, I, I reached out to them, and I haven't heard back from them, but-
What'd they say?
What's that?
You reached out to the two fire chiefs?
No, I, I used a, a certain individual that I know there, but I have not heard back. So, I, it was just one of those things where I passed it along.
I am talking to some of the Berwyn guys, just to see how the program's sustaining.
And I didn't do any additional research. I mean, like I said, I went through it myself. I think, it sounds like they tightened it up a little bit since, you know, back in the days where they just didn't care, you know, we just, like you just said, ran through the hallways.
There's a lot of accountability.
But, you know, with the one article that I read, it seemed like, according to what they were saying, is that they were, they got a lot of positive results out of it.
I read that article. It was a very positive article from Berwyn Fire Company. It was good.
All right, thanks, Joe.
Thanks.
We have a motion on the floor here with a second. Is there any other comment from the Board? Is there any from the public? Seeing none, we're going to call to question, all in favor?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. So, when can we see this next on the agenda?
It'll probably be on your next meeting.
Yeah. We can put something together.
For advertisement, yeah. Perfect. An adoption in September.
Okay. Okay, Item B, Consider Resolution 2017-25, Municipal Complex Subcommittee Creation. Mr. Schuster?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you recall, probably about a year ago, we started talking about our facilities, and we had Judy Goldstein, who was here earlier, do a facility study for the township, and also for the municipal authority. And in there, it went over what our current situation was, what our deficiencies were, what a, we should be having for a municipality our size, and operations our size. This request is to take the next step. I certainly believe, and I've had this conversation many times with the department heads and members of the community, I certainly believe that we're, our facilities are not as efficient as they could be, from a cost perspective, from a service perspective, and from an operational perspective. We have a police department, which quite frankly is not adequately configured for a department our size. We have a situation where a major part of our operations, license inspections, is at a different facility. So, we have our stuff spread out in different areas, not configured properly, and not sufficient for the operations. So, the request this evening is to form a subcommittee. That would be a five-member subcommittee. I'm recommending that we'd have two members of the Board of Supervisors, one member of the Warminster Municipal Authority Board, and two members at large. And the purpose would be to issue an RFP to anyone out in the community that has property or has any options for us, to create a municipal complex. The complex would have administration, it would have the police, it would have LNI, it would also have the municipal authority. So, it would be the one stop that people would have, citizens would have, to get all their business done with a municipality. Things that it may include would be the library, or any other function that we feel would be appropriate. So, it doesn't preclude anything, but certainly has the goal of having the functions that I mentioned in one central location. Now, it may not be in the same building, it may be one or two buildings, I, I don't know. That's something that the subcommittee would have to work through. It could be a project that builds something new, it could be a project that renovates an existing structure, or that some organization, some firm builds out for us. You know, there's a lot of questions that have to be answered, but the point of the subcommittee is to go ahead and take those questions on, get those answers, put together the concepts, and present recommendations to this Board. I'll stress that the subcommittee is an advisory or recommending body. It doesn't have any authority on its own, it's not going to start renting places or, or start construction anywhere. That's not its purpose. Its purpose is to recommend to this body, and also help provide any guidance along the way throughout the process. So, that is the discussion for this evening. Let's just see if the Board is prepared to take that next step.
Do we want to take action on the motion? Want to take a motion first, then discuss, or?
Motion first.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. So, I'll, I'll ask for a motion to consider Resolution 2017-25 for the Municipal Complex Subcommittee. Is there a motion? Mr. McPhillips, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Frescatore? Okay, now we have some discussion from the Board.
This is something we've been talking about now for quite a while, and it just makes sense, because we would be much more efficient. I know that Greg said having a, a lot of these buildings together, they then, they could all communicate, be able to run the township much, much more efficient. I just think it makes sense. Whether we can afford it or not, that, that would be a, a big issue, but I'm interested in finding out what the subcommittee comes up with, and, and what kind of plans they have, or something that may be, that might work for us. So, I think it's a great idea. Start exploring.
And this isn't something that we're going to be, sorry, we're not going to be dealing, we're not going to be doing construction like in six months or a year.
No, no.
This is something that we're talking about, like really digging down, doing our research.
Correct.
We're talking years on this kind of issue, so.
Correct. One of, you know, it's kind of beneficial that we had the CIP presented this evening, because one of the things that we have to keep in mind is, there was hundreds of thousands, over a million dollars of improvements and repairs and renovation, and things that we have to do at this facility, just to keep it running. And some of the questions we want to know is, is it worth it to spend that money, you know, and still have an inadequate facility, rather than take those resources and go somewhere else? So, those are long, it's long-term planning, so no, no shovel is going to go in the ground in the next few months. This is going to take a while to, to get through this process and figure out what works for the township, and ultimately, what we can afford.
Right.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, I, I see, I see this as, at a point where the school district was many years ago with their failing facilities, and, and it's, and even with the police department, it's, it's ancient next door, it really is. Brian, being in the business, you would know that it's, it's ancient, and, and our facilities are either going to need a lot of money dumped into them, and when we're done dumping the money into them, we're still going to be dysfunctional, because our LNI is going to be across town from where we do our municipal business, which is a problem. I mean, I think a lot of people walk through the front door here every day, looking for building permits.
Right.
And we say, oh, no, 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 you've got to go all the way over to Bristol Road, and-
That definitely makes sense, to have the two of them together.
I just think it's worth forming a committee and taking a good, hard look at it. We might decide in the end, hey, we're just going to upgrade our facilities, but I, I think it's worth taking a good, hard look at it.
Yep.
When you, when you look at the capital improvement plan, and if you go blue sky on it and say that we got all the money to do this over the next five years, we're talking about just on the police facility, LNI, and here, you're talking almost $2 million. I mean, now, obviously, a new complex would cost far more than that.
Yes.
But, at a certain point, we're throwing good money at the bat, and it's, there's a lot of options out there. You know, one thing I've, since I've been able to serve on the sport, I've been very cognizant of what other towns do, and seeing all the different options in front of us. We could upgrade these facilities, we could, you could do private-public partnerships. You know, Concha Hocken did some very interesting stuff when they, we did their facility. A very different town, but there's a lot of options there, and because of the wealth of options, I think the only responsible thing to do is to actually have a committee comprised of citizens who, who can really look at all of them. And also, because, you know, say we build a new facility somewhere in town, how do we, how are we disposing of this property? Where does, where does this go? Do we use this for township? Do we sell it? There's, there's a million questions, so I think it's the most responsible thing to do, and it's the most democratic to turn it over to a group that actually has, it's not just politicians, so.
Fine, and if the Board takes such action tonight to create this committee, we can name the members of the committee at a future, at a future meeting.
Absolutely. I didn't think you would tonight, I mean, you certainly can if you wanted to. One thing I neglected to mention is, I did appear before the Warminster Municipal Authority Board, and let them know that I was bringing this to your attention, and asked them if they were definitely interested, and they were all in favor of participating in this project, so passed that along. And they were going to have discussions, if you did form this subcommittee, they were going to have discussions about who on their Board they would recommend to, to fill that slot.
Right, because we're, we're talking about one of our bigger investments we're going to make for quite some time.
Greg, I look at this as a 50-plus-year decision.
Yeah.
And that's why you have to look at this very carefully. You'll notice in the proposal or the proposed resolution, it talks about the committee also recommending retaining professionals as needed. One of the things that I would feel strongly about is if we do go down this path, that we do hire the appropriate professional, professional architect, or a firm that has experience with municipal facilities, especially police facilities. Police facilities have very unique characteristics, and you have to make sure you have someone with experience that knows how to construct those for the current needs and for the future needs.
And just for recruitment purposes alone, retention purposes, you know, we're in a bit of a, we're surrounded by municipalities that haven't been investing a lot in there.
Mm-hmm.
We want to keep our, our talent here, so.
One of the biggest investments we're going to make, and one of the biggest steps we're going to take, but again, you know, like you said, we're just going to be exploring, looking into it.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
The committee will do a good job, make recommendations, and if we can afford to do it, I think it would be a great idea. I think all of our residents would agree, it'd be more efficient and easier for all of them, you know, to be able to communicate with the township, too.
We'll see on social media in a couple of hours.
We'll see, we'll see, yes.
I just got to say, I can't pass this up, since you mentioned about making sure that we have people, experts and professionals, especially with, with police departments. In my time at Radnor, we actually went through this process, where, you know, we were removed from the building while they were tearing it down, we were given temporary facilities, and then we moved in. And after all the planning and the money and everything that was spent on the facilities, we get in there, and the first thing that we noticed is that there was no portable radio coverage. So, that was a little bit of a hiccup, but I think they eventually resolved it, I think.
Is there any comment from the public on the motion, on what we're talking about? Does anyone want to weigh in? Sure, come on.
It's very quick.
Sure, it's okay, give us your name.
Mike, Mike Binder, 785 Cypress Road. There are so many empty buildings here, I mean, the shop, the Kmart, the, whatever street that was on York Road there, why not just have one? I actually, when I first walked in here, when I first moved to Warminster, I did walk through the front door to get a copy of my, the building permit that went through on my house. It would be nice just to use one of those shopping centers, like how cool would that be, like, one-stop shopping, literally under one roof.
Those two, those two properties that you've mentioned are spoken for.
Well, something, you know, something like that, you know, there's a brand-new Gander Mountain, if you can borrow that from, I'm saying, but, you know.
Yeah, it's a fair point. I don't think we're looking to take any, we're looking at what exists and what can we work within.
Everything is on the table.
Everything's on the table.
You know, old school, and that's another.
No, yeah, but no, your point is valid. I mean, there's a lot of opportunities. It's about rethinking the way we develop in this town and how we proceed. It could be really, depending on how creative the committee gets, you could have some really distinct ideas.
If there's no other comments, I'm going to call for a vote on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, motion carries. So we'll sort out the specifics in the future meeting of makeup of the board and bring that forward to the board.
Thank you, I will get feedback from the Authority Board, and I'll start putting notices out there if anyone's in, or any citizens that are registered.
For the citizens, right.
Then go ahead and submit their letter, and I'll pass those along.
Excellent. Okay, next we're going to go to Item C, Authorization to Advertise Amendments to the Noise Ordinance. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a subject which has come up often with residents in the manner in which we are able to enforce our noise ordinance. It's obviously a quality-of-life issue. One of the main issues we have with the current ordinance is that there is a hard definition in there about what is and what is not a violation of the ordinance, and it's based on decibel readings. Those are very hard to go ahead and get at the exact time when it's occurring. We don't have the resources to equip all police officers, all staff, to have these, these instruments, and of course, you have to be there at the time the violation, alleged violation, is occurring. So what we've done is relook at the ordinance and try to make it, get away from that hard and fast standard, to something which is more enforceable, I guess, I don't know if the right term is common-sense standard, but we want to make sure that people are able to enjoy their property without having unusual or unreasonable noises, now, based on what our officers, what our agents are going ahead and feel is, is a violation. So, the wording was developed by our staff, working with our solicitor, and it's for your consideration this evening, if you'd like to make these changes. It's a very high-level view of it.
I would just like to say that I appreciate you guys working on this. This is something that, you know, that I did routinely enforce as a police officer, you know, a few years back. So, I look forward to hopefully a lot of these issues being rectified just by a simple officer responding. The only thing that I would bring up was, there has been some, some of my neighbors had brought it to my attention with respect to start time for work on Saturdays. As of right now, I believe it's the same thing Monday through Saturday, it starts at 7:00 a.m., and I would like to discuss with my fellow board members, potentially pushing that back a little bit. My, my initial recommendation was nine, but I'm flexible.
Does anyone have an opinion? I guess I'm going to start, because I'm the only one here in the construction industry. I, I understand where the residents are coming from, but I also understand from the construction standpoint of work in construction, that these guys working on 100-degree roofs, you can't have them start at 9:00, they start early for a reason, that they want to get off of that roof by noon and get their day's pay in. I think if we restrict people to 9:00, contractors may not want to come and do roofs in our township, for instance, because Saturday is a big component of work. They work on Saturdays because we're so busy right now. I mean, I, and it doesn't apply in the winter, because it gets dark, it's dark until 7:30, 8:00 o'clock anyway, in the wintertime, they don't start anyway, but I, I like to keep it the same, but that's just my opinion. I mean, it's totally up to the board, which way the board wants to go with it.
I, I feel a similar way, not because of my experience in construction, but from experience of guys working on my house, they, I, they put in a roof in September, it was probably 95 degrees that day, and they worked 14-hour day, until it was about 8:00 at night. I mean, is, is there any ordinance in, in our comparable area that, that starts that late? I mean, are we placing ourselves at a competitive disadvantage?
I can speak for the, the ordinances in our other municipalities, most of them are seven.
Okay. I mean, I absolutely understand.
And I think one of the big issues is our new residential construction projects, that by next summer should be pretty well wrapped up anyway, for the most part. Mr. Ketterman, Mike?
The ones now, we've got a few more coming, but. But, you have a good point, and my experience is it's been seven, but I haven't looked at it recently, you know, you guys make good points. I think there's some municipalities that push it to eight.
On Saturday?
Yeah, on the weekends. I mean, some don't even have any on Sunday work, I mean, most do now, but, you know, years past, I usually got the caller, you know, hey, they're out there, we're even on Sunday, trying to get, get a house done for settlement on Monday, so it's usually residential, it's not the commercial, but, you know, I haven't looked at that recently, I don't have the experience if it's changing.
Let me ask, ask a question, I mean, we have pre-con meetings with all the developers, I mean, can we put the request into them? I know it probably, you probably like talking to the wall, hey, do you guys mind keeping it down in the morning?
I can actually do that, I mean, I can say, be cognizant of that, you know, but I can't enforce it then.
Right, right.
And also, a lot of them is not involving a pre-con.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's just for the new construction, but I have a feeling it's more of what you're talking about, the smaller, you know, repairs, the houses, the roofs, the driveways, getting in there to redo a driveway, sealing it, garage repairs, so you wouldn't cast a pretty big net on that.
I mean, I understand the point of getting done early because the weather's so hot and all that, I understand. I have gotten calls from residents, you know, people rev up these, these different machines at, you know, early in the morning, they've got babies, they're not, some of them, they work all night, they're not getting any sleep, they're complaining because of the noise. It'd be nice to back it up to 8:00. I don't, I mean, is there's, like you said, could we talk to the developers to see what would work for them, if that, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is in this situation, because, I mean, I'd like the quality of life to be good for our residents, but at the same time, you don't want to stop construction going on, and we don't have a whole lot, you said, going.
We're specifically talking about Saturdays, not Friday.
Right, on Saturdays, right, right, Saturdays.
8:00 on Saturdays, I mean, I could see that.
I think that 8:00 is a fair compromise, I think 9:00 is a little late, but.
I would be very happy with that.
I would be okay with 8:00 as well on Saturday.
That'd be great.
That's a fair compromise.
Right, I think that residents would appreciate that, too.
Okay, so, and if that's where you are, did you already make a motion? Was that Saturday and Sunday, or just Saturday? Sunday's prohibited.
Sunday's prohibited.
Yeah, that's right, excuse me, that's right, it's Saturday.
They have to request, we've had that in the past, very rarely, but they'd have to request that due to some circumstance, new construction.
Right.
Is there a motion already on the table?
I don't think we put, I don't think I asked for a motion yet on that.
No, you just, there's no motion.
I mean, if we're done discussing, I'm going to call for a motion.
Okay.
To advertise the changes to the noise ordinance, is there a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Monroe, second.
I'll second.
Mr. McPhillips, any further discussion?
I think it's a compromise, and now, now the only, now when they violate it, they'll violate it at 7:00 instead of 6:00.
I was going to mention that, actually, it does, it does help, actually, the staff in new construction and, you know, the house repairs, they'll still creep, but you'll probably get that 7:30, 7:00.
They'll start the trucks, and the generators up, right.
Right.
But hey, it's a step in the right direction, it's protecting our residents, right?
Exactly.
And I mean, I think it's crucial that, you know, I mean, the big reason why the ordinance was changed is because it, no pun intended, but it handicuffed us with respect to the enforcement of it, you know, from the police department end of it, so I mean, I think by, you know, I look forward to a lot of happy residents.
All right.
I, as a resident myself, I know it's on Tenille Road, Mark, we don't, we don't live far from there either, it just gets so noisy sometimes.
It's nice and quiet down in my little area.
Yeah, it gets real noisy sometimes, I'll tell you, so I do appreciate that, that we're taking a step to, to take care of it, thank you.
Is there any comment from the public before we take action? Sure, come on up. My man, you're active tonight, I like it.
I am, that, this is actually why I came, for a noise ordinance.
Okay.
All right, so if you remember, a long, long time ago, I came in for the dumpsters behind my house, when I first moved in. I went to you guys, and I found out, I was told it was a zoning issue, but it was not, it was a ordinance issue, which the zoning board has no issue over, no choice over. They don't show up at 5:30 anymore, thank God, they show up at 7:01. I don't know what the new noise ordinance is, if it's new construction only, because I didn't read it, I didn't get a chance to, but I would love to push back. I'm actually contemplating selling my house, because it's so bad. I have three kids, they wake up, oh, trash trucks are here, like, it's horrible. I live right behind, was it Mealy's Furniture? We've asked them, you know, over and over again, and 7:00, 7:00, you can hear them at the other end of the, the complex, come on down. If you can move it to, I would love 9:00 on a Saturday, I mean, on a weekday, 7:00, I realize my kids are going to be in school soon, eventually, you know, and 7:00 they'll be up anyway. On a weekend, it would be, it would be great to sleep in.
Well, yeah, well, I, I was just going to answer his question, I mean, he didn't know what the changes were, so yeah, I think you already addressed that, though. It doesn't change anything during the week, based on what they said, so it would still be 7:00. So what you're saying is, obviously, you don't have an issue with Sunday, because Sunday's prohibited. Saturday, they just decided that they want to do it 8:00, and you're just asking for 9:00.
I would love to try as late as possible for anything. I mean, 8:00 would be great, if, if that's the best I can do, but like you said, there's creep always, if they, if you tell them 8:00, they'll show up at 7:30, 7:45. But again, is that new construction, or is that only, it's for everything?
That is for everything, so if they, if they said 8:00, it would, it would just apply to everything, and we wouldn't enforce like anything else, so if they showed up at 7:59, they'd be in violation, if they showed it at 8:01, they'd be okay.
Okay, so, in my previous experience, so, the enforcing is the hard part, because nobody, nobody's there at, like, I hear the dumpster calling, I'm not, I always feel bad, I would never, I've never called 911 over that, it's silly to me, but if I called them, they're not going to be, the trucks aren't going to be there by the time I call. So, I would like to see, I would shoot for 9:00 and hope, and maybe if they come at 8:30, it'd be okay, but like, the creep thing is, you know, kind of hard to get over, so.
There's one thing I want to ask the chief, because I don't know exactly what the system is here. With, a lot of people refrain from using the 911 system, because they don't feel it rises to an emergency, but if that's the only avenue of notifying the police department, is that something they should still be doing, or is that specific?
Not the only avenue, God, 672-1000 is non-emergency number. Hello.
Hi.
Yeah, it's not the only avenue, 672-1000, 215-672-1000 is the non-emergency number for all non-emergencies. Emergencies are strictly 911. When it gets classified as an ordinance, it's a low-priority job for Bucks County Radio, and they dispatch it within anywhere from 0 to 4 minutes, 1 to 4 minutes, so it could sit on their board for 4 or 5, 4 minutes before it comes to us. And then, you're talking about the sector car getting out to wherever, Center Point, or Mealy's, or wherever they have to go, so, yeah, trash trucks come in, they scoop it up, he hears the noise, he picks up the phone, even if he calls 911, we get out there, trash truck's gone.
Right.
You know, and we're site officers, so if we don't see it, you know, we have to rely on witnesses and things like that, and.
674.
672-1000 is the non-emergency number for Warminster.
That's 24 hours a day?
Yeah, it's Bucks County Radio, it's right in the EMA over on Jacksonville Road.
And if I could jump in, I'll encourage everyone to go ahead and use that. I called it myself just two days ago, I was in another township, there was someone doing something they shouldn't, shouldn't be doing, and I called the number, it was an emergency, but I got a police response within a few minutes.
Yeah, there's a couple of them for the county, like Doylestown area is 3430100, that's another non-emergency number, but it's all based off the exchanges, depends on what, you're going to get a dispatcher, and then a call taker, and then it'll go to the independent zone for the area in which it covers, so.
Yeah, I just wanted, because I hear that a few times, so I don't know if there's a, if we have that advertised, if we put that up on the website.
I mean, basically, you call and they say, 911, what's your township? Because it could be Gibson Avenue, Warminster, it could be Gibson Avenue, Ben Salem, so it depends on what, so they'll ask your township, if it's an emergency, what your problem is, what your name is, and they go down the list, so, all right?
Thanks, Chief.
All right.
Thanks, Chief.
So where, where are we with this?
So I have one other question before you, is there, I was told by the zoning board it's not possible, but is there, within a certain distance between, like, residential versus a commercial property, or something along those lines that you could factor in?
Well, it's in, and you're, you're talking about in your circumstances?
In my personal, yeah, circumstance, because it, like I said, I didn't read the new ordinance, but it shakes my house, literally shakes my house.
This doesn't distinguish, though.
Was it?
So, the, the use that you're contemplating, or the noise you're contemplating, would be a violation of this ordinance already, so you're wondering if, if you could do a separation for the use that's there?
Well, maybe make it later for around my neighborhood, on my, on my particular block. It has to be all of Warminster, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's all encompassing, and that would be a nightmare for our police to enforce, anyway.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So where are we with that?
Well, I think, I mean, his request was to do it later than 8:00, but you had all seemed to compromise at 8:00, if you're still good with 8:00, then you should pass the motion, and we would advertise it accordingly.
We all, are we all good with that?
No, I mean, it's, the, have we had communications with the owner of the strip mall over there? And they've communicated to their holler?
Yes, there's also signs.
Right. And their holler just refuses to comply, or they are complying now, they are complying now.
We've gotten a good response, Chief Donnelly had officers sitting up at one point.
I know that, I know that there was a response, yeah.
It has gotten better, it has gotten better, it was 5:30 in the morning at some point, it's not 5:30 in the morning now, it's 7:01, literally.
Right, okay, all right, let's, I mean, at this point, I, 8:00 is still where I'm at, just because I'm afraid of, if I could selectively slap it on your neighborhood, I would, because I understand, I live in an area where there's a lot of different noises, but I think when we're thinking about the whole town, I think 8:00 is probably still right for right now, and we take it one at a time, we see how it goes.
You, you see how this operates, and you can revisit it at any time, you know.
Yeah, we don't want you to leave, I mean, at the end of the day, I don't want you to leave.
It is a deciding factor, not going to lie, yeah.
I don't blame you, I don't blame the lease, but it's.
It wasn't like that when I first moved in, so.
Right, I don't want you to leave, none of the people up here want you to leave, so let's try this, and we'll keep on it.
All right, I'm going to call the question then, for the advertisement of the, the changes to the noise ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll move on to Item D, Consider Pension Investment Advisory Board Committee's Recommendation of PFM for Advisory Services for the Township's Defined Benefit Plans. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under the Resolution 2015-11B, the Pension Investment Advisory Committee was formed to advise the board on all matters with the pension, including the selection of who the pension consultant should be. That committee did decide to put out an RFP a number of months ago. As a result of the RFP, 11 firms responded. Of the 11 firms, 6 were chosen for interviews, the board, so the committee met all day, and met with all 6 of those, those firms, and at the end of that process, was prepared to make a recommendation. As noted in the memo that I sent out previously to the board, there was an objection raised by the police union. Throughout this process, we've tried to been open and transparent with all of our unions, letting them know that this was occurring, inviting them to review the proposals, inviting them to sit in on the interviews, and the feedback that we got from the police union was that they were not in favor of PFM, because PFM does, and another division provides services that helps municipalities in negotiations and arbitration cases with police and other unions. The advisory committee took that very seriously, and they recommended for PFM, but to hold that in abeyance until that conflict or that issue was favorably resolved. There was a meeting with the police union, we were unable to resolve it, they still have that concern, so the Pension Investment Advisor Committee met again, and they decided to still recommend PFM to the Board of Supervisors. If you go with the recommendation tonight, we would move forward with the relationship with PFM, which would mean crafting the necessary agreements to have them as our pension advisor, move all of our funds over to a new custodian, and other ancillary agreements, and the move all of our funds over to a new custodian, and other ancillary agreements, and the investment policy statement, such things as that. So the recommendation is before you to move over to PFM as our pension advisor.
Okay. I'm going to call for a motion, and we can have discussion. Is there a motion? Mr. Crowley, is there a second?
A second.
Mr. McPhillips. Yeah, I'll start off discussion, being a member of the pension committee along with Mr. Monroe, that we spent a full day interviewing some really highly qualified companies, and I think, I just thought PFM just stood a little above the rest. But they were all really qualified people that came in and took the time to come and give us a presentation.
Being the other member on the advisory board, I felt the same way. I would actually even go a little further than that. I thought PFM really hit it out of the park, as far as I was concerned. Now, I do want to go into a little bit of specifics from the perspective that afterwards, that we, when we found out about the concerns from the police department, it weighed heavily on me because they did not have a seat at the table at the time, them and the non-union. So I did vote against making the recommendation for PFM through the advisory committee, specifically because they did not have the voice. Now, as we know that we've made the recommendation to give them a seat at the table and create two additional seats, but that's the reason why I did that. But PFM wound me, and I was very happy with their presentation and look forward to the vote.
Yeah, they really showed that they have a tremendous amount of resource, you know. I look forward to working with them if we take such action. Tonight, I really think they can do some nice things in regards to our pension investments and keeping this MMO under control or perhaps shrinking at some point.
I just want to ask then, so are we committed to be in with them for extended period of time? What if we are unhappy with their services? Do we have the option of changing companies? Or how does that, how does that work?
I don't have a contract in front of me. That'll come at a future meeting, and that would explain that. But typically with these arrangements, they're not long-term. But you, this is not the kind of relationship that you want to change these kind of firms every couple of years.
Right, I understand that.
But the, you are not going to be hooked into it, no matter what.
It sounds like from, I trust my fellow board members, they're saying that this company had resources far beyond what the other companies had, and that they felt really comfortable with them. So I'm going to go ahead and agree with them. I just wanted to say, just in case, you know, there was a problem down the road, that we had the option of making a change. Because I know you, investments are, personally, you keep, you know, with the same person, so.
Absolutely.
I'm totally comfortable with that. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
What was the vote in the committee? Final vote?
Well, the, there was actually two votes. The first vote was five to nothing, but to hold that in abeyance to resolve the police union concern. After that, when it went back to the committee, it was a four to one vote.
Four to one, okay. No, I mean, it's, I put a lot of faith in the committee we put together, the people involved are people who understand pensions. The two people representing on this board are the two of the people with pensions that have worked in that arena. And there were some very qualified individuals on our committee. So, you know, when, I mean, obviously I empathize with the concern that the PBA, I understand where they're coming from. Same time, the best, best thing for the township, the best thing for all the funds that we're managing. We need to do better than we have the last couple of years. And from what I understand, PFM seems to be our best bet to do that. And so that's kind of where I'm thinking right at the moment, so.
I think, Mr. Schuster, you shot some numbers off of us, off the top of your head of what, like, one-tenth of a percent.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, I mean, if we have a $32 million pension, one-tenth of one percent is equal to $32,000. I mean, that's, you know, so if you even think that they're just that, that little bit of a margin just makes that much of a difference. And I'm not sitting here claiming that they're going to be that much better, you know, but that's how, that's how much of an impact, you know, one of these firms can have. And ultimately, it impacts the taxpayer, because every time we don't get a good return, there's a shortfall. And that's when the MMO goes up, and that's where the taxpayer has to contribute even more to the pension fund.
That's what I was going to bring up. We got some, some really good news from the audit today, and that, you know, but we still have the MMO issue. We still have our pension and healthcare concerns, and they're going to be there for a long, long time. We have to use every tool in our toolbox to chip away at that, and hopefully PFM's a hammer.
I do have to make a, ask a legal question, though. I mean, obviously, I made this well-known with the Pension Advisory Committee. I found out during this process that PFM actually does, they manage Radnor's pensions, which means that they manage my pension. So I want to make sure there's no conflict of interest before I vote on it.
No, there's no conflict of interest. You have no direct, you have no actual direct financial relationship with PFM. Now, you would like, you would like them to do better, but.
Right.
But there's no conflict. Thank you for, it was appropriate to disclose it nonetheless, so.
Thank you.
Is there any more discussion from the board? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Also, I did want to thank RBC Capital. They served us well. They came in right after the crash, when we were reeling and stabilized us, and they were a good firm to work with, and we want to thank them for their service to the township. So I want to move on now to the item E, Consider Resolution 2017-26, expanding the membership of the Pension Investment Advisory Committee to include one member of the police union and one member of the non-uniform union. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Mr. Monroe alluded to this earlier. This was raised as part of the discussion, that the membership of the pension committee did not include any union members. It is common in municipalities that pension boards do include union members, and so the committee did discuss it. It made the recommendation that the committee be expanded from five members to seven members, with those two additional members being one uniformed union member and one non-union, non-uniformed union member.
So this was actually Mr. Monroe's idea, which was a very good one. You know, to have them sit in because they do have a stake in it, it is their pension, so I'm all for it.
I think it's pretty straightforward. It's part of the reason why I asked what the vote was on the second vote, understanding that, making an assumption, saying two more additional members vote against, still would have been the same way. But this way, maybe we avoid this type of ill feeling in the future.
Right.
So I support the idea.
Right. If it takes care of conflict in the future for negotiations, I think it's a great idea to have, bring everybody to the table so they all have, anybody has a stake in it, has a voice. So, great idea, Brian.
All right. I'm going to ask for a motion then.
Motion.
And a second, Mr. Monroe. Any other discussion from the board? No. Any discussion from the public? Seeing none. Call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Motion carries. Next up is the Professionals Reports. Mr. Schuster, Township Managers Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have my written report, in case there are any questions. I do want to take a moment and thank both the Hartsfield and Warminster Fire Companies for their efforts yesterday. They had a busy day yesterday to deal with a smoking transformer, a sprinkler system activation, which displaced a number of families, a vehicle that crashed into a building, which also displaced a number of families, and an apartment fire. So again, thank you for all the volunteers, for getting up in the middle of the night or first thing in the morning and doing what you do. It's greatly appreciated. We are well into the 2018 budget preparation. We have meetings with department heads, so we look forward to meeting with the board on that. We're also finishing up the implementation of new finance software. That's in full swing. Our finance director's been doing a fantastic job with that, and I know he's looking forward to getting that fully online and getting us off the legacy software that we have. Once we have this in place, we believe it will make everyone's lives a lot easier. And that is all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone have anything for Mr. Schuster? I want to congratulate Mr. Schuster. He informed me today that he settled on his home in Doylestown, and they are officially a Bucks County resident. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. We're glad to have you.
Good to finally be here.
Yeah, I'm sure. Okay. Next up is the Solicitors Report. Mr. Peters.
So Mike S. submitted a report to you guys dated July 19th, 2017. I know it was already distributed. The only thing I'd like to point out, because I know he's been struggling with it for some time, with Judge Mellon in the Court of Common Pleas, he was able to finally secure an order directing 138 York Road to no longer have that accessory additional apartment above there. So at the end of the day, we prepped for court, he went, and the guy never showed up. So it's done for now. Unless there's anything else, any specific questions, you know, Mike's always available, so just give him a call.
Okay. Anything more from Mr. Peters?
No.
Okay, move on. Engineers Report. Mr. Kenner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our July 2017 report, I think, is in your packets. Just to highlight a few things, I brought with me tonight record plans for Home Two Suites Hotel.
Beautiful.
They are signed, and they are in Amanda's possession. And also a minor subdivision, San Salone. Those record plans are also signed and are already for recording. That's a two-lot subdivision over at 133 Evergreen Avenue. We've already discussed stormwater, I believe Mr. Schuster mentioned earlier, about the MS4 presentation. I will tell you, Karen, Aaron, and the rest of my staff have been working very hard on that. If you recall, I will highlight, because of the recession and some financial issues that the township had a few years back, we were definitely behind on the stormwater as far as the MS4 program. We did a great job eight, nine years ago, getting some big projects knocked out where we had some major drainage problems. I know all the board are aware of it, but this was kind of put by the wayside because it was unfunded mandate at the time. So there's, you know, there's going to be some hefty costs, not only in engineering, but then in the infrastructure costs over the next five years or so. And I know my staff's worked real hard on that, and I know greats are going to have to struggle with where to come up with some of the money each year. And to be honest with you, I've been involved in other municipalities, so I'll probably get in a little bit more involved in that as far as guiding the township, you know, over those years. So Karen will have more at the next meeting. The only other comment I have is we have three, three pre-construction meetings also scheduled. Home Two Suites Hotel is ready to go for actual, their construction meeting, as well as Ann's Choice. I'm sorry, that was actually already held. And then I believe there was a third one, and then Longstrath. Actually, I was just talking to Amanda. The original developer's going to move forward with that, the county builders. They decided not to, not to sell that. I think they saw the success, and we all thought that at staff level.
Sure.
Of the other projects.
They did.
So they're ready to go. So we have two more coming up, one we just had. I would also like to mention that we'll be closing out, and it won't be in front of the board, but I was in contact with Police and Fire Credit Union. They have a punch. They've been really great to work with. I know the staff had no issues, and I was on the phone a little bit trying to coordinate height bar issues and stuff on their property, and they were very cooperative and very appreciative of the staff, as well as some of the contractors on their adjoining property working.
They gave out really nice beach towels and really nice backpacks that are perfect for beach bags.
He took some time to say what the process and getting through all that. So I know that was a good addition to the community. So I wanted to pass along that they, he was thanking me, and really the whole staff, on how that project went, so. That's all I have for tonight. Have any questions?
Yeah, I want to, not a question, but a comment. I want to thank you for the work you did on the Wawa improvements. You were personally involved in that the whole way and did a fantastic job on behalf of the board. You really did.
Thank you.
Just keeping that on track and on the tracks.
Well, actually, I was hoping to actually send an email today, going over that whole project. I know Wawa wants to get their final CO. I do have one issue that I need to document. I will be doing that early next week. They went out and did some repairs, and as soon as that guy left, I got the call to close it out. I know Wawa was emailing Amanda, and I hadn't even got back out yet. So I do have some pictures. I'm a little disappointed in some of the quality of work, one, a few parts of just the fence. But I will tell you, the height bar turned out really well. It's better than I expected.
They turned out better than I thought, too. I thought it was going to look like a prison, but.
And I will also tell you, throughout the whole process, I didn't announce when I would be there. We had a field inspector out there, also unannounced, but I kept seeing eighteen-wheelers go down that back road, trucks all the time. It was blocked down to one lane. And I will tell you, already they've noticed a big change, and I got several calls that the noise and the truck traffic, just that alone with the height bars, forget the fence, was a big, a big change, so.
Calls from anyone we know?
Yeah. But thank you for that. I'll be looking forward to completely closing out that project.
But I appreciate you spent a lot of time, of your own personal time on that.
I have. I, I.
I know you did.
I have donated a little bit there. I know that's a tough situation on both sides, and, you know, it just, it just happens. So I, you know, some of the calls and texts and stuff, I'm just handling myself. Thank you.
So Home Two Suites, so we're looking for, they'll be going to construction soon, then?
Yes. Oh, yeah, yeah. I don't have the date of the meeting.
Before the fall, they'll be?
Thursday.
Thursday will probably be the pre-con for Longstrath and for Home Two Suites.
Oh, great. Excellent. Excellent. Really good. Okay. Anything else from Mr. Kenner? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to move on to Township Managers' announcements of upcoming agenda items. Mr. Schuster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe we've already discussed the things that are coming up in the next meeting. MS4 will be a big presentation that you'll be receiving. The, hopefully, the draft ordinance for the volunteer firefighter tax relief will be on the agenda as well, and of course, the noise ordinance, which you just voted to advertise. The only land use I'm aware of right now would be an amended final for a two-lot subdivision that would also be on the agenda. And a final reminder to you and the public, it will be at Ann's Choice, and again, that information will be posted up on the website for any citizen that does wish to attend that meeting.
Looking forward to taking a show on the road. Be interesting. Okay. Next up is the second round of public comment. Any further comment from the public? Seeing none. Supervisors' comment. Ms. Frescatore.
Very productive evening. Like to thank all our professionals. They're doing a phenomenal job. Greg, you can't be happier that you're in the seat there as our Township Manager. Eric, you've done a phenomenal job on the roads, and financially, we're improving, and people in the township see that we're on the upswing. We had a couple of comments from residents who are noticing these things. Really happy that we're making a step in the right direction with the noise ordinance. I think that'll really make the quality of life for our residents much better. And on a personal note, I just wanted to say our thoughts and prayers are with the families of the boys that are having their funeral services this week, and that we are thinking of them. And that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Monroe?
I have none.
Mr. McPhillips?
Yeah, very productive meeting today, and I want to also congratulate Greg on your house, and.
Thank you.
Welcome to Bucks County.
Thank you.
Mr. Crowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just coming up this fall, at some point, we're going to be, you've seen over the past couple of years how we've made structural changes to improve the business environment in town. To add to that, the environmental, the Economic Development Committee is going to also start helping our local businesses in terms of exposure and advertising. You're going to start to see businesses spotlighted each month. This first one, Ms. McMillan, when are we rolling that one out?
The first one will be in August, at the August meeting.
At the August meeting. And we're hoping that this is something that proves successful and proves beneficial to those businesses. Just another way to say, hey, stay local and keep the money in Warminster. Also, you know, I, one of the best things about doing this job is that I get to be a big-time hero whenever I'm on TV and my little ones are at home, and I say, hi Jacob, hi Marie. They love it. I'll go home, I'll be the biggest hero. But the past two weeks, I've been thinking about my oldest one, Dylan. And Dylan's, you know, he's a great kid. He's at Coots Down. He's 20 years old. And, you know, watching what those families of those four boys went through and everything, that entire community and law enforcement and everybody, how they came together and how they, how they just got through what is a truly horrible situation. My thoughts and prayers are with those families tonight, as Ms. Frescatore said, and just, you know, there by the grace of God go I. You know, it's, it's not much that can be said, except that we pray and hope that for peace for those families. I do want to recognize the members of Warminster PD who assisted in those searches, and the members of the community who donated in any way to the searches and making that a successful endeavor. So, sorry to end on a down note, but that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And I'll just wrap it up. I too, I thought it was a very productive meeting. I want to thank all the professionals. It takes a while for the professionals to put a meeting together. It really does, and they do a phenomenal job at it. So when it comes before us, it's clear and concise. Greatly appreciated. Want to wish everyone a happy rest of July and August. It's ungodly hot. Please keep yourselves cool, especially our public works guys working outside. And any seniors, please check in on them, make sure they're okay. And that's all I have, and with that, I'm going to take a motion adjourned.
Motion.
Mr. McPhillips. Motion adjourned.